Hearing to order. I thank you all for joining us this afternoon. Robin, will you give us a roll call?
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Ms. Sundar.
Here.
All right, thank you, Robin. So we're here tonight to hear rezoning case number Z O N twenty-five dash zero five, which is Seven Brews slash Taco Bell. And so it looks like we have a rezoning case that we're gonna hear tonight. Just a couple of things for some ground rules on how this process will go, which many of you, of course, may already be familiar. But we will allow the township staff to first give us a report, and then the applicants will have a chance to present their project or their request. This will be followed up by questions and comments from the commission, if there are any. And then when the commission is ready for public comments, there will be an opportunity for members of the public to speak during the public comment period. So, Robin, you wanna present the staff's story for us?
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. So we are here to discuss rezoning case Z O N dash twenty-five dash zero five. The applicant is Pacific Bells LLC for property located at six-two-seven-four Holman Drive. That's one point five acres. The zoning is planned commercial and office district. So the applicant is requesting to amend the currently effective development plan to exempt canopies that are attached or visually attached from four-sided architecture and peaked roof requirements, and to allow a drive-through restaurant without a dining room. So in short, modifying some architectural standards for the district and also modifying the text regarding the use. Property history, the property was originally rezoned to planned commercial in two thousand three. It allows for various commercial, office, and institutional uses, including professional offices, educational institutions, and financial institutions. In two thousand eight, the site was developed as National City Bank, was formerly PNC Bank, which is currently a vacant building on the site. In terms of the comprehensive plan, site is located in subarea thirteen of the Orange Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan, is marked as planned commercial. Recommendation thirteen dash two reads planned office, planned commercial, or multifamily at two units per acre, south of Shanahan and west of schools. Recommendation thirteen dash five reads in part, reuse and infill development could include a low-impact mix of uses, which is primarily residential or light commercial. On the following page, you can see the aerial of the parcel. So you have Olentangie crossings east to the, just to the north of the site there, twenty-three to the left or to the west, and then the private drive to the east of the site. On that screen, you can see the proposed site plan proposed by the applicant. So there's two buildings that are proposed for the site. So the first, which is the northern building there, would be a Seven Brew drive-through coffee shop. It would not have a dining component, it would be drive-through only, and so that is one of the reasons for the request to amend the development text. To the south of the Seven Brew is a proposed fast-food restaurant, specifically Taco Bell. It has its own drive-through lane, and then there's parking around the site as well. So in terms of the uses, again, they're proposing a development plan, which would allow for the operation of two restaurants on the same parcel. One of the two would be drive-through only. It does not comply with the development plan requirement that restaurants shall have dining room space, so the text is requested to be amended. Each restaurant would have channelized drive-through lanes circulating traffic counterclockwise along the northeast portion of the parcel. So in terms of the text, currently, there is a prohibited use for any type of business facility whose entire business is drive-through or drive-in related, with the exception that a financial institution may elect to have a total drive-through concept. So the applicant is proposing to remove that prohibition from the text. This is, it's just an amendment because that language is not in our base zoning code, it's just specific to this planned district, so it is not a divergence from the zoning resolution. The second textual amendment is to add language under the exterior cladding on permitted materials subsection, and states that canopies that are attached to or visually attached to the main building are exempt from the four-sided architecture and peaked roof requirements. Again, that is the same as the first, because it's not in the base zoning code. It's just an amendment to this development plan, it is not a divergence from the Orange Township zoning resolution. Goes into a little more detail there on the site, but five hundred and forty-three square feet building for the coffee shop, and then just over two thousand square foot building for the fast-food restaurant. The site plan would comply with all the parking and building setbacks, those are in the development plan already, since the applicant is complying, those are not proposed to be modified. In terms of building materials, they would also comply, except for the aforementioned canopy. For parking, this was one item that we found in our review that had a slight discrepancy. So Section twenty-one point zero-one E of the zoning resolution requires one parking spot for each two seats in a restaurant, with a minimum of twenty-five spaces required. The initial site plan provided by the applicant had twenty-four parking spaces, so they were one short. We did receive an updated site plan from the applicant that added one more parking space, and we received that yesterday, so it's not included as part of the packet that you all reviewed. And I would say that township staff has not thoroughly reviewed it, but we've taken a quick glance, it appears to fulfill the requirement. So we do have that on hand to show on the screen later if the commission wishes to view it. Landscaping, street trees would be planted if they are not existing already, and the landscape plan would meet the requirements of the development text, as would the lighting plan. Signage, there were signage plans submitted for the two restaurants. This was another area where we found some slight discrepancies with the requirements of the text and the zoning code. So there were several wall signs on each of the buildings that exceed, if you'll recall, the signage code of the Orange Township in Section twenty-two, there's a fif, there's currently a fifteen-foot height maximum for wall signs on commercial buildings. So that's fifteen feet from the ground to the top of the sign. And the, I believe there's two signs on the proposed Seven Brew and three signs on the proposed Taco Bell that would exceed that requirement. We noted that and communicated that to the applicant, so they did send us some updated site plan or signage plans that specifically flagged those as divergences. So it does show that they would exceed the fifteen-foot height limit, which is in the current version of our signage code. The development text does also have a prohibition that reads, no ground monument signs will be permitted along commercial outlots adjacent to the US twenty-three corridor. They did show a proposed monument sign on their initial signage plan that was submitted, and so the text would have to be amended in order to permit the monument sign shown on the plans. It's my understanding from the applicant that they are not intending to amend the text at this time, and so likely that monument sign would be removed from the plans in later versions. We do note that the Board of Zoning Appeals has denied multiple variances for monument signs in this area for the past several years as well. So that's not something that is universal in Orange Township, it's unique to this planned district in this area, but just noting some past history there. In terms of divergences, again, no divergences were specifically requested, but we did identify those two issues, which I mentioned, the first for the parking spots, which could be fixed by an updated site plan from the applicant, and the second for the wall signs, which would exceed the fifteen-foot maximum height, which I believe the applicant intends to request divergences for, so a total of five signs. And in terms of review from other agencies, since this is a use-based amendment, the existing planned district did not have to go to the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission for their consideration and recommendation. And at time of writing, the Orange Township Fire Department has not reviewed or approved the site plan, but I do believe that that is in progress. That's all I have for now. I believe the applicant is on hand if the commission has any questions.
Thank you, Robin, for that. Are there any immediate initial questions from?
Yeah, I have one question to Robin. Have we any time approved, like, the two restaurants in one spot, like, whatever been asked here? Have we approved any time anywhere? Could you help me to recall?
Not in terms of restaurants that I'm aware of. I think there's some precedent in terms of if you've gone by the Big B Coffee, that's in the Home Depot parking lot.
Meyer.
Yeah, it's Meyer. A little farther south on twenty-three. That was something where, I mean, the Meyer existed for years, the Big B Coffee opened in that parking lot after the fact, so there is some precedent for that type of business. It's not necessarily two restaurants on the same parcel, but same, you know, multiple businesses on the same parcel.
Did they come to us?
No, because that planned district did not have the requirement that no drive-throughs are, no drive-through-only businesses were prohibited, they did not have to come to amend their development text. That was done administratively with the zoning permit.
Yeah. Okay. I have a question. I know I have to step out, so I apologize, but where the drive-through is for the coffee and then people, will they drive through for the Taco Bell as well? How will that traffic flow be managed?
I think that's a question that is best left to the applicant.
Okay. Maybe they can answer this also. I do see one Seven Brew.
Yeah.
And the Taco Bell over there. I know, like, that's not us, so I think it's going to be something similar to that. So maybe we can take some references there or?
Yeah, just that the one down the street, the Taco Bell is, like, way down here, and the Brew is way down there. This one, they're both gonna be in the same.
Yes, yes, I see that. Yeah, yeah. Maybe they can explain us more. Thank you, that's all I have.
You've seen the addition of the parking space, right?
Yes, and Eric, I believe Eric can pull that up.
I have one quick thing.
Sure.
Do you have a, like, a bigger, clearer, like, version of this? I don't know whether it's me.
We'll give them opportunity to know that. They're gonna bring up the additional parking spaces, I just wanna confirm that that-
The updated one.
That that was in there.
It's very similar, we added one right in this row right here.
This is much better, yeah.
And to confirm that, we're amending the text of the plan right now.
Correct.
Yeah, not, not, not a divergence, just amending the, okay, the wording.
It would, if the commission chooses to approve, there would be divergences for the wall sign height, that would be the only true divergence.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I just wanna make sure, clear on the two texts that we're amending. One is to allow?
One would be to allow for a drive-through business, the second would be architectural requirements. So there's certain, in the text, there's certain requirements for four-sided architecture, certain materials. The applicant is asking, they're gonna have a canopy over part of the drive-through, so they are requesting that that canopy be exempt from those architectural requirements.
So when I was looking at this National Bank that was there previously, you know, how you have the teller drive-through, there's not one there, huh?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Doesn't look like there was one there. I don't know if you all know if there was-
I think they had. They had one, they had one.
Right, and again, the prohibition is against standalone drive-throughs, so in fact, the Taco Bell could go there today with, you know, without, because it would have a dining.
It's the coffee store, yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions from the commission? And what was the other, there were two changes to the text, one was the?
So the use, the drive-through, and then the architectural requirements for the canopy.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, applicant, are you ready to present?
Drew, can you come on up here with me? How you guys doing?
We'll ask that you please state your name and address for the record.
Drew, is it okay if I just speak out loud?
Yeah.
Drew Ponton, five-five-two-nine Lexington Drive. With me tonight, I'm the Director of Real Estate for Seven Brew here in Ohio. With me, I have Matthew Wayman, the Senior Director, with me, John Elsie, our Architect, and Alan Wiley, our Civil Engineer. Just a little bit about Seven Brew, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar or not, but are drive-through-only coffee business. Our buildings are just a little bit over five hundred square feet. We operate, you know, pride ourselves on community fun and speed, but above all else, fun. I can tell you, I worked in the stand last week here on South High Street, and it is a lot of fun. So if you guys haven't tried it, I would definitely recommend. But anyway, we, so kinda operate similarly to Chick-fil-A in the fact that, you know, our employees are out in the drive-through lanes taking orders, you know, car-to-car and running drinks. And that's kinda where that speed component and that personal experience that, you know, we like to call the Seven Brew experience comes from. So that's kinda the snippet of it all. Our average time, you know, from customers coming in to exiting is about four minutes, which greatly outpaces other QSRs and coffee brands alike, so, you know, that's a big thing, making sure we're not stacking up and getting to people through. So with that, you know, I'll kinda hand it off to these guys if there's any more. And yes, there is no food, it's drive-through, just beverages and coffee.
Just curious, is it a franchise, or is it, will this be a corporate store?
Yes, it is a franchise location, but Pacific Bells, which is the Taco Bell franchisee, so that's the same parent company, they're both owned by the same company.
Okay, very good.
I just have a small question. You said you had beverages or whatever, so it's coffee. I'm not a coffee drinker, but what else is in there?
Yeah, I mean, we have some energy drinks, those are really popular, and then something we call seven fizzes. So you could come in and get a sparkling soda, and, you know, say you like strawberries, put some strawberry syrup in there, mix it on up, and we have over twenty thousand different combinations you can mix together, so highly recommend trying it out.
I think I'm one who went through college without being hooked on coffee.
So, from a traffic perspective, you know, I don't know if people come in and get coffee and wanna go to Taco Bell. Are, you know, managing the traffic story there, what does that look like, or what have you all done to ensure that there's not a traffic jam, not accidents and that sort of thing?
Yeah, well, I mean, specifically, we have the employees out in the, in the drive-through lanes directing traffic and helping people move along, so I'm sure you guys have probably been to a Chick-fil-A, and you notice there's a big gap in front of you as the other car moved up, so we'll, you know, direct people to keep moving so we, you know, get people through. So that's probably the biggest portion.
Do you do the pickup, like, Chick-fil-A, right? Like, you order online and pick up, is that a spot, something like that? Is it the same concept, or?
Not order online, we just, just order on-site. I think Alan wanted to add this as well.
Yeah, so the ordering is done in an iPad-like a Chick-fil-A, there is no ahead ordering, so it's all done on-site, and then drinks are delivered up, when you pull up to the store or up to the restaurant there, they will come out and hand-deliver you the drinks.
Like Chick-fil-A?
Yeah.
The person would come and, okay.
And then, there's, we have roughly eighteen cars in the queue for Seven Brew, so that's a lot of cars that we can stack off of any private drive or public road, and then Taco Bell appears to maybe have ten. So we have quite a bit of stacking on this site to keep cars out of any private drives, and then we also have additional queuing on our site that we can do, that's not affecting anybody else negatively. Both stores are owned by the same company, same parent company, so if there's any kind of a traffic issue, we do have control over both stores and can, we'll work together to get that figured out. We're not gonna have to go to somebody, another third-party, to try to get them to help out and calm the traffic. When you had a question on the drive-through traffic adjacent to Seven Brew there, there's a twelve-foot drive-through lane, which is a pretty wide lane, that's half of a city street. All those people are gonna be tucked up close to that building. Seven Brew, as we're trying to change the code, is a drive-through business, so not saying no one's ever gonna come up there to order, you can if you want to, it's not advertised, but there should be very few people walking around that building public wide. Typically, there'll be employees that are working at Seven Brew and know that the drive-through's there. I don't anticipate any kind of a concern or issue with that. We have a very wide sidewalk, it's almost eight feet wide, and then again, those cars in that drive-through lane are gonna be pushed up close to that building. So there should be, shouldn't really be any interaction with pedestrians and cars in that drive-through lane in the middle.
What is the building next door to that, right now, to the, to the National?
The walking cooler.
This building?
Sorry, you mean, just, just south of-
Just adjacent, yeah.
Yeah.
Next to it, I'm just curious. It's not in your space, but whatever's next.
I believe it's a multi-tenant strip, there is a Starbucks in there, a few other businesses.
And a Scramblers or-
Yeah, Scramblers.
Yeah, bunch of.
So, can you go to that other map? So I just wanna make sure, so where the PNC Bank is, is this one? Yeah, so, because I'm looking at this one, I just wanna make sure I understand for clarity. So how the bank is situated now, will there be a split in between? Because it looks like there's a split drive.
Right.
Okay, so the Seven Brew will be in the front.
Seven Brew will be out close to Olentangie Crossing, and then you have the Taco Bell, and then that drive aisle, and then the multi-tenant building.
Okay.
The traffic pattern is gonna be very similar to what it is out there today, it's just we're gonna be reorganizing some of that pavement-
Right.
-to create it for the two uses.
So the Seven Brew is not facing twenty-three?
Yes, the front of the store.
It is facing twenty-three, that's what I thought, okay, yeah, yeah. Robin, question, so changing or amending the text to add this language with respect to a single, or just a drive-through only, it will apply across all of these, all of the districts that qualify for this, is that correct?
So, yes, it would. I mean, I believe there's a way to craft it so that it applies to only to this property, but it would apply to this planned district, which is most of that Kroger area. If, you know, if the commission wanted to drill down to this site only, then you could add that as a condition to approval.
Yeah, so the Taco Bell could go there now.
Correct.
As is, and it is only because of the Seven Brew that we have to amend that.
Correct.
And so, what is your radius of protection for a store? So if, you know, franchisee store, in other words, you know, how far away before you open up the next store? What's your circumference or radius?
Matthew Wayman, fifty-eight thirty-one, Stewart Road. We are the sole franchisee for Cincinnati, Columbus, and Cleveland Market, so nobody else would be, have the ability to come in from a Seven Brew standpoint.
But what is, what is your, still, what, how many miles before you open up? How close will stores be, is my question.
The next closest store to this one will be our other existing store on High Street, and that's all that we have planned for this immediate area.
'Cause I'm just, what my concern would be is, and I don't, I don't know the districts in my mind to be able to see them, but if there's other space, then all of a sudden we have these single ones and then other requests for just the drive-throughs only, so.
This would be our only request. As much as I love Lewis Center, I also, I live in Galena, so I'm just a couple doors down here.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, this one is close to home for me, as much as I'd love to do more than one store, and there's not really a lot of other areas to go, and if I'm being brutally honest with the changes on Route twenty-three with ODAP coming, this scares me a little bit to do anything else in addition to this, but we're also not gonna do anything, we spent a lot of money on opening these stores and operating them, I'm not gonna do anything to hurt my stores or our employees from our financials.
Yeah, certainly, I, I'm sorry.
Do you have one in the Galena area? No plans to put one there?
No, ma'am, unfortunately.
Yeah, so the reason I'm asking is not only just because of the Seven Brew, I'm thinking of other concepts that may be, that's why I'm asking, how do we limit the language to, if we decide to go that way, to just this location? Talk to us a little bit about the sign you're asking for, you know, so our limitation right now is fifteen foot, up to a maximum fifteen foot in height. What are you asking for?
Yeah, so we have three signs on the Seven Brew building that we are asking for divergence on. One is the front sign that'll face US twenty-three, we're asking on that one to be eighteen feet. The reason we're asking for that is due to the size of it, that we are permitted, if you drop it down an additional three feet, would actually be into our canopy. So we, the eighteen feet allows us to keep it nice and centered on the face of that building. And then we have two Seven Brew logo signs on each side of it, so that would face Olentangie, Olentangie, and then towards Taco Bell, which would still be visible from twenty-three. We want those to be fifteen foot, seven and a half inches above. Again, if we lower those, it starts getting into our canopy again, so that's the reason for maintaining those two, or those two on that side. The Taco Bell signs, there's two of them, on the towers that they have, and we would like to install those at twenty-two feet. Main reason being, it's a very tall tower to direct people to the entrances to the building, and if we start lowering them, it's gonna look really, really silly, having this nice tall tower and then a sign put smack in the middle of it.
But we don't have, do we have any other examples on, whether it's on twenty-three or whether it's this district or any other district that we exceed fifteen?
You're asking for examples of where it is fifteen feet or where it's been allowed to go above fifteen?
Where it's been allowed to go above it, yeah.
So across twenty-three, there are several places where it exceeds twenty feet in height. There, so directly across, I believe the Panera Bread is one, Crimson Cup was another, where there's, there's either been-
The same.
Panda, yeah.
Yeah.
Panda Express, yeah, is one just down the street. So on the, on the west side of twenty-three, there's actually another amendment that was done five, seven years ago, to allow wall signs that face twenty-three to be twenty feet in height in that general vicinity, so they did it through Zoning Commission and Board of Trustees. BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, has heard and approved and denied some variances for wall sign height in that area, including Panda Express, including Panera, including Crimson Cup. So I don't, I don't have the data for that, but there's-
BZA denied it, but is that, is that, I hear that correct?
BZA has approved some and denied some others, so it's, it's been a case-by-case basis, but there's precedence for both.
I just wanna point out, we did modify several of the Taco Bell signs to go down to the fifteen feet that is required.
So you're just talking about the, yeah, the sign that's out? Yeah, the monument sign that's out toward the front. So some have been done, and this is Taco Bell monument sign, and what's the height on the Taco Bell thing, was it twenty-two or twenty-one?
Yeah, what is, twenty-two feet, I believe, yes, twenty-two feet on those tall towers. Because again, the towers are twenty-three feet, and if we put that sign at fifteen high, the majority of that sign is gonna sit well below fifteen, and it's gonna be in the middle of that tower.
And the, just going back here once again, and I don't know if you know this precisely, but you mentioned that they've been approved up to twenty foot, or do we know if any have been approved? Foot, or do we know if any have been approved greater than that?
So the, the ones on the west side of the twenty-three that, uh, were basically given blanket approval, that was a twenty-foot max. I believe the Board of Zoning Appeals has approved some that were above that twenty-foot height limit, probably around that twenty-two foot height, I don't, again, I don't have that right off the top of my head.
No, 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 okay. I mean, the twenty, twenty-foot sounds reasonable, but I'm just trying to see if there's any other ones, um, that have been done. Any, um, anything else you'd like to present for your?
I guess the only thing I would say is, um, with regards to restricting the drive-through use to just this parcel, that would definitely be all right with us. No problem with that.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody else?
Yeah, it's, it's just a comment, like, compared to the location at twenty-three, uh, the Seven Brew, like, I have never gone personally, but whenever I cross that, I always see it's very busy. Very busy, like, but the difference between that location and this, there is no grocery store or the density of the strip mall like the one here, because the Kroger and Dairy Queen, oh my god, it's always full. So there is new places like Panda Express and, you know, the traffic is getting more crowded there. So do you have any, any sort of, is it the same setup like the twenty-three there? Or is there something else to, you know, avoid the traffic? Because it's gonna overflow and then, you know, come back to the road.
So on, on, on this, most coffee shops build their, their stacks of about eight or nine car stacks.
Okay.
Uh, this, where we have eighteen here. We have roughly eighteen, and that's, and we can fit probably at least ten more cars
Yeah.
um, on our, on our premise, uh, without it exiting onto anybody else's property. This also with Pullman Drive on the rear, in the event of a, of a rare occasion, it wouldn't backflow onto twenty-three. Our average order time from the time you order to the time you leave is about four to four and a half minutes, cause we don't have food. So it really slows down the whole process. And when you add the double lanes in, and the ability, if, if you're second in line to be able to, to leave, if you get your coffee before the car in front of you, we've really dialed this down into a, into a science. We've changed some of our, um, some of the issues we've learned since we've opened, you know, a lot of our stores. We currently have twenty-two stores open in Ohio, and we'll have about forty open, um, nationally by the, by the end of this year. So we've learned a lot of things, including changing some of our promotional events, which we had, uh, it's called jackpot hour, which really sent everybody to the store at one time and created these traffic, um, issues. So we've extended that hour to the whole day instead. And it's really helped, um, um, help that, help that issue, uh, as well. And as Al mentioned before, one of the benefits of, of this project is that the Taco Bell and the Seven Brew, they are sister companies. So we do have the ability to manage the whole site, including the Taco Bell, uh, in the event that there was a special occasion or a special promotion that caused, uh, some additional traffic. But the other thing that we've done is increased our staffing on, on sites as well. So we've learned our days of business, our hours of operation, what times and what events really, um, you know, do cause us more traffic and will, will increase our, our staff. Each of our locations has about fifty employees, between part-time and full-time employees. Um, so we can really staff these, you know, twelve or fifteen people at a time if we need to, to, to help that. In the event there was ever, you know, a concern, we wanna, not just, cause I live in the community, but we, every community we enter into, we wanna do it in the right manner. So if there's any way, or any issue that comes up, whether it's traffic or, or anything at all, you know, I'm right down the street, I can come each anytime and have that conversation.
Okay.
Help with that. When we do enter into the community, we truly try to be a member of the community. So we'll pick a local charity, we work with the schools a lot.
Yeah.
Um, you'll see on some of our locations, sometimes we have the mascot of the school or something on our, um, on one of our exterior surfaces, um, as well. So, um, I, I really think that, um, we've done a really good job at learning from some of our previous mistakes and getting this into a well-rounded machine at this point.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, you know, the school might have be given, so be ready for that.
Yes.
All three schools, like, right behind you, kind of.
For sure. We're, we're looking forward to that, um, with the school aspect for sure, and also to provide, you know, some jobs for, for the students and, and we'll.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm just curious, how long has the, the bank been ghosted?
Gone a long time.
How many years?
Three to four, three to four.
I've been here for three years, and I'm pretty sure it's been baking.
Yeah, three to four.
It's been more.
Covid time?
Yeah.
According to Street View, about twenty-twenty. That was when, approximately.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, is there no more comments from the applicant and no other immediate questions right now from the, um, commission? We'll open it up for public comments if there's anyone here that has some public comments. I'll just read it for the record, if you would like to speak, you know, please come to the mic uh, and state your name and address, please address the commission with any questions, and the commission will pose them to the applicant after the public comment period has ended. Please try to keep your remarks to three minutes or less, and try not to repeat any concerns that you may have. If someone else has already said it, uh, if your concern has already been stated by someone else, you can say that you agree with their concern. Is there any public comments to share at this time? Okay. And, uh, is there anything else the applicants wish to share?
I'm happy to give a public comment if you like.
You know, just the general comment, uh, um, definitely I think it should be limited to this parcel. The thing that, uh, helps me get there is that there is a sit-down restaurant on the same parcel, and it would be qualifying, and, um, you know, I'm not so sold on, on the it's owned by the same organization, cause these are two independent franchises as well, which could be sold to someone else. But the fact that a sit-down rest on the property makes it more palpable to say, okay, it should be there. Second thing, from my opinion, and certainly you all can, can weigh in, I'm not, um, challenged by the signage change request for, um, Seven Brew. Uh, the monument sign, in my mind, a twenty-foot story should still be high enough to give you visibility good access story. But I don't know if, you're asking for twenty-two, I'm, I'm hearing. I know that there's some maybe been approved for others, but I, without knowing exactly where they are, I, my thought is to try to have some. What I'm saying is consistency there, but I don't know if you all have a tall one where that.
How tall did you say Panda Express was?
I don't know off, I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Yeah.
Um, I remember we have denied the car wash place, um, I think they came with that request.
Yeah, I'd really like to know what's, just in that little
All of them.
Between those two major streets, what are, cause I don't want one to be higher than the other, and I'd like for them all to be kinda consistent right up in there, but.
Yeah.
I don't think you, no matter what you approve or don't approve, there's not going to be consistency.
There's not gonna be consistency, yeah, okay, I got you. Yeah.
If you, if you give us two minutes, Eric and I can, can probably find a few things.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, if you will, just spend a couple of minutes looking at that real quick, that'd be cool.
So according to my notes, um, I'd looked into what's now Tommy's Car Wash in that, um, on the, again, east side, uh, just a little bit further down, um, had a BZA case, twenty thirteen, to have signs up to twenty feet in height. So that's the car wash there. See if we can find a couple others.
And that was approved?
Yes.
Uh-huh, yeah.
What was the height on that?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, yeah, yeah. I believe I was there.
We would be okay with twenty feet, we couldn't do that.
Yeah. I remember, I was, I was there.
Panda Express, the wall sign height was eighteen feet.
I don't think anything else came. That's what I remember.
Let us look for the, the Crimson Cup as well, because that was one, the CME, that was one.
That was the one, yeah.
And I was actually looking at the other elevation, so twenty feet going east on the east face. On the, the, uh, west side, uh, facing US twenty-three is twenty-four feet, so higher than that. Yep, so, and then that, uh, twenty-four feet is what's written into the zoning amendment for several of those parcels uh, facing US twenty-three on the east side. Um, but obviously, that's only for certain parcels, not this corner parcel. So that was in twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, okay.
Yeah, so I, um, my thought is twenty-foot and limiting the language change to this parcel. And I'm okay with the, um, other signage requests for Seven Brew. Any, if there's unanimous agreement in that, then if someone wants to, or are there any other modifications that we also need?
Um, so, I, in preparation, um, I, I did provide a, a list of potential modifications, and I can print off a, a new list with some of the revised language. Uh, but the first being that the applicant approve, uh, get approvals from the fire department.
Yeah.
Uh, the second being that the applicant shall revise their site plan to include at least twenty-five parking spaces. Uh, the third would be the applicant shall update the signage plan, uh, to request divergences for five total wall signs to be installed above the fifteen-foot height limit. However, no sign shall exceed twenty feet in height measured from finished grade, uh, to the top of the sign. Uh, the applicant shall update their signage plan to remove references to the freestanding monument sign. Uh, the applicant shall revise the development text to limit the drive-through only use to be permitted only on six-two-seventy-four Pullman Drive.
Can we do parcel number instead of address?
Sure.
In case there's two addresses?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so, anyone want to make a motion on that? But I don't know if anybody wrote those down.
I didn't write them down, he's got.
If you, if you give me thirty seconds, I can, I can print it off as soon as I type in this parcel number.
There you go.
We'll give it forty.
Yeah, I hear you.
Can I ask if there's a, is there a local charity that you or a couple that you recommend for us to take a look at as relatively complement the, the town?
Yeah, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for us to make such a recommendation from the zoning commission in this, in this mood, but, um.
That's why I asked for multiple.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I wasn't gonna make a recommendation, but it's nice to touch bases with the Olentangy Braves.
With the Olentangy Braves.
Yeah. That's their backyard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, resolutions to recommend approval with the modifications of zoning application number ZON twenty-five dash oh-five of Pacific Bells LLC. Motion by Pamela Foster to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees the approval with modifications of zoning application number ZON dash twenty-five dash oh-five of Pacific Bells LLC, the pages of which are each stamped, "Received with Orange Township Zoning on nine-ten-2025", requesting the application number one-five-seven-eight-five upon finding that it is in the interest of the public convenience, comfort, um, prosperity, or general welfare, or sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and including additional modifications listed below. Number one, the applicant shall obtain approval for the site plan from Orange Township Fire Department prior to approval of the zoning by the Board of Trustees. The applicant shall revise their site plan to include at least twenty-five parking spaces. The applicant shall update their signage plan to request divergences for, um, for five total wall signs to be installed above the fifteen-foot height limit. However, no sign shall exceed twenty, um, feet in height, measured from finished grade to the top of the sign. The applicant shall update their signage plan to remove references to freestanding monument sign. And the applicant shall revise the development text to limit the drive-through only used to be permitted only on parcel having PID three-one-eight dash two-two-oh dash oh-four dash oh-two-three dash zero-zero-zero.
I second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Sundar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, the next order of business is for zoning amendment.
Mr. Pierce, sorry, uh, can we have a quick correction?
Yeah, I gave you the wrong parcel number.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Ms. Foster, if you can just, so let's.
Yeah. Okay.
If you could just read the corrected parcel number.
Yes. Make one correction, the parcel number is PID number three-one-eight-two-two-oh dash oh-one dash oh-five-eight dash oh-two-four.
I second.
And that was for zoning number, uh, ZON
Twenty-five.
twenty-five dash oh-five.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the zoning amendment application number ZON two-five-zero-six. Uh, Nova Lands LLC, uh, is the applicant and the owner. And, um, so you wanna provide us a?
I sure can. All right, so we are discussing rezoning case ZON dash twenty-five dash zero-six. Uh, this is for, uh, Nova Lands property located at six-six-zero-one, uh, Columbus Pike. Uh, this is, this parcel in particular is just over, uh, one acre in size. Uh, the zoning is planned commercial and office district. Uh, this is, uh, similar to the last case, this is a textual amendment, uh, to allow for the modification of a structure on the site. Uh, so the applicant is requesting to amend the currently effective development plan, uh, ZON dash twenty, uh, ZON dash nineteen dash zero-seven, uh, to permit a new model home, uh, in place of the existing, uh, onsite structure. Property was rezoned from C-two to planned commercial in nineteen ninety-two, and a minor modification was made in twenty-ten. On twenty-nineteen, a rezoning was approved, uh, to allow, align all parcels, uh, to planned commercial and office district, have a land use of outdoor living retail center, uh, with outdoor display. So on the next page of the staff report, uh, you can see the parcel at hand. Um, so we're just south of Lewis Center Road there, uh, on twenty-three, across from, uh, All Shepherds Lutheran Church. So, uh, I'll let the applicant, uh, kind of explain their, uh, the proposed business and how the structure would fit in. Uh, but essentially, we are here, um, if, Eric, if you can scroll down, so you can see the location on the site, but the following page shows the currently existing building. Uh, essentially, the, the property owner would like to demolish that building, uh, and build a new one in its place. So you can see that, that was, that's the newly proposed building. Uh, and the elevations are on the following page. Uh, essentially, the currently approved development text, uh, states that no new permanent structures were permitted, uh, under that development text, uh, and that no additional construction, uh, would occur. Uh, so the applicant is proposing to amend the development text, uh, to allow for the demolition of that current structure, uh, and to build, uh, a replacement, uh, in its place.
Do we, I'm just curious, historically, was there a reason why it was just only something could be built and never?
I, I'm not sure, uh, that was before my time. Uh, it, it's not a restriction that we commonly place.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was asking.
And it's, you know... Typically for, uh, you know, if you're, if you're building a new building on a parcel, uh, typically the answer is as long as you comply with the setbacks and lot coverage and all that, then you're okay to do it. However, because this specific zoning district had a restriction that said no new construction, uh, this text has to be amended in order to allow that.
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, the applicant wanna come up and share the, you know, what's going on and the whys?
Would you prefer me here or there?
Whatever works for you, just state your name and address and, uh, go from the, go from there.
Good evening, my name is Tony Ironman. My address is nineteen oh-seven River Road in Delaware, Ohio. I'm the land planner and landscape architect, and, uh, thank you for your time this evening. The site we're looking at is near the southeast corner of Lewis Center Road in, in Columbus Pike. It's not on the corner, there is one parcel, it's not owned by my client. Easiest identifiable, uh, thing about the site is the sheds and the kid, children's play equipment and everything that's on there. I'll ask, I'll answer your que, I'll interrupt my, my, um, brief thing and answer your question first. Uh, the reason we limited it to no new use or no new construction, that was offered by my client. And the reason he did is because his intention at the time was to take the existing north structure, the stone building that's on the pictures, and, um, renovate that and use it for offices.
Okay.
Okay? Let me go back now and I'll catch right back up with where I am now. Back in two thousand and ten is, uh, staff report says it was rezoned planned commercial. The site, the site was about five acres total. If you remember the hot tub sales that were there, uh, that's what that zoning was back in two thousand and ten. Sat vacant for, and there were a lot of empty hot tubs out there for a few years, if you remember. I do. And it was really an eyesore. My client, uh, purchased the land in two thousand and nineteen, and in two thousand and nineteen-twenty, we rezoned it as a PCD, uh, for, specifically for the uses that are out there. Now back to following up with the answer that I was giving you about why it's no build. His, his intention was to take that north structure, renovate it, and use it for offices. And it says that in the text as a permitted use for back in two thousand and twenty. The, um, two things happened right, right after our zoning, one is COVID hit, and COVID was there before, but it really hit right after we got our zoning approval. And COVID really, uh, tore apart, emptied the use, the office use. Bad time to get a tickle in your throat. Excuse me. Um, but, so the office use, uh, caused us to let, to delay renovating that structure. The, um, by the time COVID got passed and his interest in bringing that building up to code and getting the place looking good again, because it, nature has managed to take care of, or bad care of it, really. Uh, we got out there and we started looking at everything, and the sofas were beginning to rot. And most importantly, the foundation was falling in on itself. And the idea of renovating the house for the office use just became too expensive. One of the other businesses my client is in is, uh, constructing homes. And he does, he has, uh, a lot of different lines, one of which is kind of funny, I was on the phone with a representative of Louisiana Pacific out of, he was out of Michigan, I think he is. And, uh, he and I started talking about something else, and somehow it got to this. He said, "Oh, yeah, Dan Miller and JDM built my house." I thought, "Wow, you know, you're an off, you're an executive with Louisiana Pacific and he built his house." And I followed up, and, uh, Mr. Miller of Nova Lands, uh, does that kind of work. He wasn't planning on doing it here, but with that structure in various stages of disrepair, he asked me to take a look at it and see if we could do, we could tear down the building that's there, and within the footprint of what's being torn down, fit this building that is, that you have before you on that site. And it would simply be a model home. One of the things that came up in the process is, um, the site currently is serviced by septic system. And we were working with the health department, first on the exploration of the septic system and then continued use permit. And, uh, we found that somewhere along the line, and we don't know when, uh, the construction onsite, and it wasn't anything, my client did, it was before that, they hit the septic line and put it in a stage of disrepair. So, yeah, that's not a problem on a model home, because while the, the furnishings for a model home, the restroom, the toilet, and the sinks and everything will be in place, there will be no util, no water and no sanitary use extended to that building. So no one can flush, no one can turn the water on, it's simply a model. There will be electricity to heat the structure and for lighting, but there won't, and air conditioning, but there will not be any water or sewer. And that's really the only kind of peculiar thing there, but it's really not so peculiar, because it is a model home. And what that would do is it'd prevent occupancy, which he doesn't want to be, to be occupied anyhow.
I have a question.
Sure.
With that whole thing, because sometimes with model homes, they have staff in there.
Yes.
The staff had to use the restroom and wash his or her hands? They wouldn't be able to?
He has three buildings on his site.
Okay.
And the southern building is the office for the entire site.
Okay.
And that has restrooms, and it has the sinks and everything else. The other, the third building is the pole barn behind
Right.
his office that we've renovated as well. And so the, uh, I don't think his intentions are that he, that model home would be staffed.
Okay.
The, the office would still be the southern office.
Now, what happens, because traditionally, when there's a model home,
Uh-huh.
after all the homes are sold, someone buys the model home?
Right.
This one will never be for sale?
Ab, that's exactly right, unless there's, unless sewer becomes available, and at that time I would come before you again and, um, and ask for that to be changed, but...
Yeah, okay, and then one last question. Um, so this is the model, where are the houses proposed to be built, just further behind it?
The houses to be built will be, it's similar to other...
The Schumachers?
Yeah, similar, yeah. You would buy your own lot elsewhere, and he would build this, whatever...
Okay.
And he's going to have, not on this site, but I know he has several houses to be built, similar to Schumacher.
Okay.
You know, they might have one or two models, but they have probably seven or eight or ten.
Yeah.
And all the different variations that might come with it. So that was, that's the intent behind that.
Okay.
And to, um, to reinforce Mr. Ironman's point, there is a, a line in the development text that prohibits residential use of any kind in this planned commercial district. So it could not be used as a residence without amending the zoning.
And, and because the house sits, the existing home sits, or the existing structure sits, it's not a home anymore, where the new structure would be. Uh, we comply with all the setbacks, we comply with the, all the other development standards, the parking, the lighting, everything in there, the materials, uh, architectural materials. I, I basically, I, I was the original developer and wrote the zoning text for Evans Farm. So I stole the architectural materials and moved them over here, 'cause he had some that I'm like, "No, I don't think we want to do that." And he's like, "You tell me what we need," so I basically borrowed. I didn't photocopy, but I borrowed most of Evans Farm's text, too. And the colors are the same. Uh, the one thing, in reviewing everything today, I, I found something that, in the text, that needs to be clarified, because it's, it's an error. On page twelve of the zoning text, items nine and ten, it's, it has to do with the scheduling of the construction. Uh, that I, I failed to line these items out. So if we can do that as part of this, if, if I'm fortunate enough to get an approval, we'll get this all taken care of, but, um, in the response on number nine, in the, in the italicized, um, portion, the first four lines up to the, up to the semicolon should be correct, should be eliminated, because what it, what it says is the structure shall be repaired and renovated.
Was that, are you reading from the zoning code or are you reading from?
I'm reading from, uh, the binder.
It's, it's page seventeen of the PDF.
Oh, you guys don't have binders? Sorry about that. It's, um, item nine, I can give you...
Yeah, it's on the screen there.
Okay, yeah, that's it. "The structure shall be repaired, renovated, and painted, beginning with ninety days, or beginning within ninety days of the PCD." And that was right at the, right at the heart of COVID starting up. Obviously, that doesn't apply, so I, I came in with that, and then the next item, number ten, the bottom two lines are in similar fashion. You got a quick mouse there.
So you're saying the third quarter of...
Third quarter of twenty twenty-six, that'll allow him to get his permits in place and his financing in place.
The, what, what is this lot size altogether?
The entire parcel for his whole use is over five acres.
And there's two buildings there now?
There's, there's three buildings there now. The southern office, and then the, the pole structure is right behind it, and that's down towards the Ohio Mulch. And then this sits a little bit further north on a separate lot, I mean, there are three lots there, but it's on a separate lot, but it's still one parcel. And, um, that stands further to the north.
Yeah. One of my questions is, um, and Robin helped me, but, so if we approve, 'cause right now it says nothing else can be built there, right?
That's what we're, yeah.
And then, so if we replace this, if we change that to replace this home, it opens up for other things to be built there, is that correct?
I, I suppose in theory, yes, again, you know, again, assuming that something would comply with all the other development standards, setbacks, architectural standards, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but would they, could have to come in with a request, or will they just be able to just move forward, given that it's been?
The text in here says permitted use shall include the existing northern home, being removed and replaced with a new model home. And that's, that we were intentionally specific to not allow that window to open, and dissubject the township to any
Yeah.
invasion, if you will.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I just wanna, I mean, I'm comfortable with the, I think it's appropriate that you tear down a, your structure, you want to build something else there, and I get it about the, about the office, since, but you're still using it commercial.
A lot of us moved to our home office and
Yeah.
found it very comfortable there, you know?
Yeah, and so it's been used as a...
Do you have any idea what will come in future, like, you know, other than the three buildings? What would be the usage? I mean, like, I'm just asking.
Mr. Miller and JDM Nova, um, that's, that's what he deals with, is the, the sheds and the play equipment. And then he has the side business for the, um, model, or, uh, building homes on your lot. And that's really, that's what he does. So that's all he, it's all he's asked for, and that's all we specified in here. Anything else would come, have to come back before you again?
What about the parking for this?
Uh-huh.
What, what about the parking?
There are twenty-four parking spaces on the site.
Do we have the information?
Do you have the overall site plan?
We see, yeah, we see some kind of, oh, I don't, I don't know if you can see the actual parking, but...
If you don't, I have an eleven-by-seventeen that I can bring before you.
Robin, could you show us that?
Working on finding it.
Okay.
I can bring this up till we find it. This is, this is in your binder. And this is, this is the overall site. Here's the southern building. I can read upside down, so it's...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
This is the southern building, which is the, the office that they've renovated.
Mm-hmm.
This is the pole structure behind it, and that's where they assemble all the equipment that's out here. This is the northern building. In front of the southern building, there's seventeen, I think it is, parking spaces here.
Oh, it's existing already, okay.
Yeah, and then there's six here. And this was the existing parking lot, we renovated it, repaved it, and then we came in on this driveway that was always there, we added six parking spaces here as well.
Okay.
This is office at two thousand square feet, we're required to have five parking spaces.
Okay, okay.
And, and the building that we're, is right here, that's the one?
That's the one that we're, we're here for tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way, like, you need to? Is there a way connecting this parking lot to this?
This is all paved.
Paved, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can see that in front of this one.
We came in, when we, when we did it, we came in and we put asphalt down across the whole thing, so people could get through and see the play equipment and, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And it's growing, that play equipment, it seems like it's growing closer and closer.
You can, you can take this with you.
The Lewis Center, no, it's just, it's very noticeable.
The existing materials, uh, are to the nor, or to the east side of the pavement. We are permitted, from the two thousand and twenty zoning, to extend to the twenty-three side, or the Columbus Pike side of that drive, or that walkway.
Yeah.
But he hasn't done that yet.
Yeah.
I think he's very pleased with how it looks, and, uh, he likes the way it sits, and I don't think he wants to extend that out there.
Yeah, I just, I just, again, I, I'm comfortable with the replacing of the
I am, too.
existing home with a model home, I just don't want it all of a sudden become multiple model homes that are
No.
kind of built there. So that's what I'm trying to...
This development plan would also lock that in.
It will do that, okay, yeah. Okay, um, let's see if there's any public, I'm sorry, anything else you have to present?
I'd just be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, do you all have any?
I don't have any additional.
So we got approval from the fire department and all that, do we need to have one?
No, uh, because, I mean, the fire department will have to approve a permit for the building itself, uh, but not necessarily for the site, because nothing else is changing in terms of the parking and the layout.
Okay.
So their, their, uh, approval is not required at this point.
And is that the same thing for Delaware regionally?
Correct, yeah, since this is just a, a minor amendment, they did not...
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay.
Uh, so now, any other question? Well, let me do the public real quick. All right, uh, so we've heard from, uh, the applicant, we've heard from staff, we've heard from the applicant, uh, we've heard from the board with any comments and questions. We want to have an opportunity to, uh, see if there's any public comments. Uh, same thing as we spoke earlier, if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name and address, please address the commission with any questions, and the commission will pose them to the applicant, uh, after the public comment has ended. Please try to keep your remarks to three minutes, and try not to repeat any concerns that have already been stated. Uh, but if you've heard a previously stated comment, you can agree, uh, or disagree with that, noting your concern. Uh, are there any comments from the public? Okay, uh, hearing none. Is there any other questions from the board?
No, not for me.
Any concerns? Okay, so we're good, all right, uh, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, sure. Resolution to recommend approval of zoning application slash zone dash twenty-five zero-six of Nova Lands LLC, motion by Sundar, Punita Sundar, to recommend to the Board of Township Trustees the approval of zoning application slash zone dash twenty-five zero-six, the pages which are stamped, "Received with Orange Township Zoning on nine-eleven-twenty-five", requesting the amendment of the currently effective development... requesting the amendment of the currently effective development plan for property owned by Nova Lands LLC. Application slash zone dash nineteen dash zero-seven upon finding that it is in the interest of public convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, or sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
Just one quick question for clarification.
The parcel number.
No, no, no. Did I hear zoning number two-five-zero-seven?
No.
The sixth.
It's two-five-zero-six is the zoning number.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Okay, I want to make sure, all right. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Sundar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I did not mention the parcel number, is that okay?
Yeah, you don't have to.
Just making sure.
So we, I believe we do have some minutes that were sent out before the meeting that are on the agenda. If you would like to move to approve those, you can do them individually, or you can do them in one motion.
All right, thank you, we appreciate your time.
Good night.
So continuing business with respect to the approval of the minutes, which I'm okay if we approve them collectively altogether. Any concerns about approving all the minutes together? All right, if we could, someone make a motion for approval, and if you will read each one of those, that would be great, and then we can vote on it.
I move that we approve minutes from June seventeen, twenty twenty-five, zone twenty-four dash oh-five zoning code rewrite minutes. Approval of July eight, twenty twenty-five, zone twenty-five dash oh-three minutes. Approval of July fifteen, twenty twenty-five, zone twenty-five oh-four minutes. Approval of August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, zone twenty-five dash oh-four minutes.
I second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Sundar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there any other business before the commission?
No other business? We do have a, we do have a meeting on, sorry, October twenty-eighth is the next meeting at six-thirty.
Next meeting October twenty-eighth, okay. Anything else, any other announcements? If not, we all adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.